You all are ahead of me. You got quiet before I even asked you to. Thank you very much. It is a pleasure for me to call the April 10th School Board Meeting to Order. Wichita Public Schools will be a district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Tonight, for our moment of silence, I would like for you to think about Jerome Williams. He passed away this last month since our last school board meeting. He served on our district's Board of Education from 1992 until December of 1997. He was both the Vice President and President of the Board during that time, and he led this district through a very contentious district boundaries reorganization. We appreciate Jerome's devotion and dedication to our district. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Our colors are presented tonight by the Hamilton Middle School JROTC Program. This honor cadet group is led by the Cadet Sergeant First Class Liliana Morales Garcia, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Lestat U. Analoa, Carpet Corporal Leland Clayland, Cadet Sergeant First Class Manuel Garcia, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Sebastian Garcia. Please rise. You may post the colors.
Post.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Post. Right face. Forward march.
Please join me in thanking the Hamilton Leadership Group. First order of business, Patrick.
First item, under Reports, Superintendent Student Advisory Council.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Dr. Thompson, and Board members. My name is Israel Torres, and I'm a Junior Northeast Magnet and a proud Supersac member. I hope that everyone had a great and relaxing weekend. I want to first give congratulations to our distinguished classroom teachers. Can we all please give them a round of applause? This is my fourth time this school year representing the student voice. I enjoy signing up as it provides me an opportunity to practice my public speaking skills. At our Supersac meeting, Ms. Wendy Johnson introduced our group to Superintendent-elect Mr. Kelly Bielefeld. We are happy that we will have a superintendent who has experience in Wichita Public Schools as he is currently the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. In our check and circle, we were asked what was exciting and scary about the transition from middle school to high school. We were then split into groups where we discussed methods to help ease the transition from middle school to high school. We first need to ask the opinions of middle schoolers about what would be helpful to them. We first need, we felt that at the end of their eighth grade year, there should be bus trips to feeder schools where they can shadow responsible high school juniors. They would tour the school, sit in classes, and experience the bell schedule. At the end of the day, they would go to an assembly where they would learn about the clubs and sports at that high school. There also should be panel discussions at their middle school where eighth graders could ask questions to high school seniors. Another idea would be to have three or five freshman fun days throughout the summer so that they could make new friends. There could also be workshops where eighth graders could learn how to succeed in high school, and there could be multiple open houses. And then there could be a mentoring program where a junior with similar interests can mentor their freshmen throughout their freshman year, and the juniors can be with them during their freshman fun day so that a relationship can be developed early, and they would meet on a regular basis during the year and follow up with them to see how they are doing. We want the freshmen to have someone that they could count on for advice. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to share our student voice. Our Super Supersac meeting is on April 18th, so you all are welcome to come and listen to our discussions. Are there any questions?
Ernestine?
I think that's a super idea that you have about a way to ease the middle school kids into high school. I would ask that you go back and ask your team, your Supersac team members, what's an idea of easing the elementary into the middle school? Because they are really scared.
Yeah, we probably need to. We'll do that for sure. Are there any other questions?
Kathy?
Where is your Super Supersac meeting and what time?
Oh, yeah, it's going to be at the Riverfront Stadium. Yeah, yeah, I completely forgot about that. I'm sorry. Eleven o'clock. Thank you.
Stan?
That was my question.
Okay. There was a question about what the topic of discussion is going to be.
Keeping kids on track to graduate. My bad.
That's a good thing. Isaiah, you did a great job. Thank you so very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Next item?
Next item, good news.
We've got some super news tonight. This is good.
Good evening, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the Board. This is one of our very exciting evenings. We're going to celebrate our teachers and some of the best of the best. We have amazing teachers across the district, but this is a great way to celebrate with the Distinguished Classroom Teacher Awards, and I would like to invite Dr. Lauren to come down and for Michelle Cuda to come down and to share more about recognizing our great teachers.
First, I just want to recognize Israel because he's done this four times as a Supersac member, and every single time we ask for volunteers, he kind of waits, makes sure that's good, and then he's like, "I'll do it," and he does such a wonderful job. So I just want to give a shout out to Israel because he's done an awesome job all four times. All right, now to our DCTAs. So this is a wonderful evening because tonight we're going to recognize some of our outstanding teachers who are winners of our Distinguished Classroom Teacher Award. And all of our teachers make a difference, but these folks went through a rigorous process to receive a nomination and complete an application. This year, we had almost 170 complete applications by the time we got to deciding who the winners were. So when I say it's the hardest year ever to win, it's the hardest year ever to win. And so not to devalue any of the other years, but this year was exceptionally difficult to win, and they rose to the top for their teaching excellence and for the way they connect with students.
Okay, we are going to start with our runners-up. So would you come down, go ahead and come join us down here? You don't get to hide. Okay, well, starting up, we will, I'd like to introduce for, in the new teacher elementary category, we have Casey Root. She is a fourth-grade teacher at Price-Harris Communication Magnet.
And in the new teacher secondary category, we have Celine Sang-Vilai, an art teacher at Meade Middle School.
In the primary category, we have Deanne Davis, kindergarten teacher at Peterson Elementary. And in the intermediate category, we have Blake Moser, fifth-grade teacher at Spade Science and Communication Magnet.
We have a couple of folks who couldn't be here tonight, but in the middle school teacher category, we have Kathy Peters, who is a math teacher at Curtis Middle School. And in the high school category, we have Courtney Reedavoged, who is an ESOL teacher at South High School, and I'm trying to figure out how you got all the easy names and I got the difficult ones. It is, it is, yeah.
In the support teacher elementary category, we have Olivia Sumner. She's a virtual teacher at the EIA Academy, and she is not able to be with us tonight.
And finally, in support teacher secondary, we have Jessica Petrick, who's the instructional coach at Education Imagine Academy.
Congratulations to our runners-up. So now we're going to recognize the winners of the 2023 Distinguished Classroom Teacher Awards, and we'd like to invite Dr. Thompson and Cheryl Logan to join us. We will call each of you one at a time and to join us up here at the podium. We'll start with the Distinguished Classroom Teacher in the new teacher elementary category. So Jamie Lansing, third-grade teacher at Seltzer Elementary. Come join us, please.
Mirrors on. Today we are learning. I can understand the distance.
Jamie became a teacher to inspire students, and it changed their lives by encouraging them to be the best they can be. She wants to be a positive role model, just like her teachers and principals were to her.
If you agree with that, show me.
She implements strategies that motivate her students to learn and has a talent for building relationships with them. She creates a classroom culture of community and family, and students always want to be on their best behavior for her.
Who is one person that is really important to you? Okay, so you, most of us will probably say our mom or our dad. I want you to think a little bit deeper than that.
Even as a new teacher, Jamie is looked upon as a leader in her building, and colleagues come to her for advice on both academics and ways to support positive student behaviors. She started her career as a para and worked through the Teacher Apprentice Program at Wichita State to get her teaching degree. She now mentors paras who are currently in the TAP program.
If you don't agree with Paxton, give me a thumbs down. If you have no idea, be like, "I don't know."
Jamie says that being a teacher is more than teaching a student to read, write, or do math. A teacher serves as a mentor, a person that students can look up to, confide in, and respect. She teaches her students that they all have a story, and while they don't get to pick how that story begins, they do get the opportunity to write the rest of their story and choose how it ends.
I want to teach them math and reading, but I also want to teach kids how to be successful in life and learn that they can be somebody and just be that person that believes in them. What I like that all of those friends did is that they use their what? Resources.
Jamie, would you like to say a few words?
First and foremost, I could not have done this without my husband and my kids up there. I went to school as an older adult after my principal encouraged me to do so, and so I am a full-time mom, I am a full-time wife, and they have not ever once complained. They have let me do me these last couple of years, and I think I have truly enjoyed being in the classroom, making a difference. Each year so far has been my favorite year, my favorite kids, and I just enjoy building relationships with them. Like I said, I love to see them be able to read and write, but the bigger goal in where I will find true fulfillment is when I see them make something of themselves. So thank you all, and congrats to everybody.
And in the new teacher secondary category, we have Kiara Suarez Sosa, a language arts teacher at East High School.
Now we're going to start transitioning into academic writing. This will be the final skill that you practice before you transition into your sophomore year of English.
Kiara works to establish a classroom environment that fosters learning and encourages individual growth. She says putting students' needs first will inspire them to succeed. She wants students to feel safe, loved, and encouraged.
Specifically, now let's start talking about the structure. How do you start an essay?
Kiara grew up in the Wichita Public Schools and says that she was inspired by many of her teachers. She remembers the teachers that showed her compassion and support. She chose to return to Wichita Public Schools as a way to pay it forward and to thank her teachers for always believing in her.
Our next word is body paragraph. So go ahead and write down the word body paragraph, and you're writing down the definition.
When you walk into Kiara's classroom, students are actively engaged. She strives to have her lessons connect to real-world situations, allowing them to apply what they've learned. She says this teaching method also improves her students' critical thinking skills.
Clear? Yeah, I can't hear you? All righty, thank you. Thought you fell asleep on me there for a second.
Kiara says teaching is a hard job, but when she forms relationships with students and successfully teaches a lesson, she knows that she chose the right profession.
Kids, they are just very funny, they're brutally honest, so it's great to be able to work with those kinds of people. It just makes me excited to get to work with them, teach them about English, have them connect with English literature, and make those connections within the classroom and in the real world as well. Bye, guys. Have a beautiful day. Be good, make good choices.
This is not Kiara, but this is Sarah Richardson, Principal at East High, standing in her stead.
In the primary category, we have Maribel Benedict. Maribel, come on down. She's a kindergarten teacher at Allen Elementary.
Maribel knew she wanted to be a teacher back when she was a third grader. She and her friends would set up a pretend classroom and take turns teaching and doing homework, but it was a favorite high school teacher that confirmed her belief that teaching was her calling.
Give yourselves a big kiss on the brain and say, "I'm awesome."
Colleagues say that Maribel is a strong teacher leader and is always willing to collaborate and share ideas, and she is a mentor to other teachers. She believes in the importance of continuing to learn and grow not only for her students but also for herself and her colleagues. She enjoys learning new strategies and trying them out in her classroom so that she can better meet her students' needs.
Oh, you know that word? What word is that? Like, it's in a sight word. Good job.
She believes the key element for her students' success is to tailor each lesson to them. When students see the connection between the lesson and their own lives, they are more engaged with the material.
At the end of the word, and what does it say? Oh, my goodness. You guys are awesome.
She says she knows her students need her every day, and that's what drives her to continue to be a better teacher.
I get to come to work every morning and meet the smiling faces of the children, and so they're my motivation to get up in the morning every day. I am a learner by heart, so I love to learn, and so I love to instill that in them. And so we kind of impact each other. You know, they help me to grow in all aspects of education, and then I love to help them grow as well, you know, and learn every day.
So now start the sentence again.
Oh, lordy. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for the honor. First, you know, I was, I think, thank my colleagues and all the leadership that I have encountered through all these 25 years of teaching. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be who I am today. So thank you to everybody in the Wichita district.
Okay, in the intermediate category, we have Mario Flores, third-grade teacher at Gammun Elementary.
Helping each other, being kind, all those great qualities that, you know what, those qualities are going to help you be a successful student.
Colleagues and parents say that Mario goes above and beyond for all his students. His infectious energy and creative teaching methods keep his students engaged and excited about learning.
Wherever you go, right? You can be, think I can win it, right?
Mario believes that all students, despite their backgrounds, can achieve excellence in education with the help and support of a good teacher. He arrived in the United States from Mexico when he was 10 years old and remembers how the teachers at Jefferson Elementary made him feel welcome and inspired him to learn. He uses his childhood experiences to make meaningful connections with the students, especially students who are learning English.
Collaboration means like the same working together. Love it. Kiss your guys' brain one time, please. Smart brains.
Mario also mentors student teachers from Wichita State to help them prepare as they get ready to lead their own classrooms. Before COVID, Mario created an after-school soccer program to give boys an opportunity to interact after seeing a great need for after-school activities. Mario and other volunteers held soccer practices and games with the team's parents cheering them on.
Do you have to be kind as well? Pound it. Love it.
Mario is very thankful for his Wichita Public Schools education and says he was fortunate to learn in a safe and welcoming environment. His goal is for all his students to feel like they belong and that they can achieve excellence.
Decided to become a teacher because of the positive impact that I can make in students, just like what teachers in the past did with me, and the influence, the positive influence that those teachers made in me. When I moved here, I didn't speak any English. Just made a tremendous, great impact, and that just kind of planted a seed in my heart and changed everything. Helping each other, right? Nice job, dude. Well, I just want to say thank you to the Wichita Public Schools. I've said it before, I am a product of this district, product of teachers believing in me, amazing people that have guided me, supported me, and my gratitude to the Wichita Public Schools, all those teachers, my family, my parents, mama, papa, te quiero, los quiero. Thank you so much.
In the middle school teacher category, Eric Stone, music teacher at Gordon Parks Academy.
That one's hard, but it's okay. Start from the beginning, double-check first two measures. Here it is, two notes, first two measures, two notes, and ready, go.
Colleagues say that when you walk into Eric's classroom, you can feel the unity and the determination of his students.
Check your hand posture. What does it look like?
Gordon Parks Band Program has grown tremendously since Eric came to the school two years ago. He has high expectations for his students. He builds strong relationships with them, and they want to perform at their best. They feel like they're part of a community, and they enjoy showing off what they're learning when guests enter the room.
Next one, look ahead, you got it, ready, and.
Eric is also an Abbott Elective teacher, encouraging his students to think about the possibilities to excel after graduation and in life. He has taken his students to visit Wichita State for a college tour and to Band Day to give them opportunities to learn about college.
It was a quarter. Nice work. It was a quarter. I played quarter note instead of a half note. That was silly of me. I hear that happening in the room, too.
Colleagues say, whether it's comparing melodies of two composers in band or creating a project in the Abbott Elective class, his students are thinking at a higher level.
What's another reason? Why would I not want to do C, G, C?
His success in his classroom would not be possible without the relationship he builds with his students. Gordon Parks is a capturing kids' hearts school, and he embodies the motto of if you capture a kid's heart, you can capture their mind.
Students, no matter how well they feel like they do academically, in my room, they can find success at every level, whether it's fifth-grade music all the way through up to eighth-grade band or music identity and connecting with music on a level that they might not be able to find in other classes.
My friends at GPA told me I needed to prepare something, and if I didn't write it down, I'd talk forever. So I am overwhelmed with gratitude, and I look at this list of monster teachers and master teachers that have come before me as recipients of this distinguished honor, and I feel humbled. As we recognize all of the recipients tonight, this honor is a reminder that I'm exactly where I'm supposed to be, and I know that, I knew that at a very young age, I wanted to be a part of something that was inspiring and way bigger than me. So thank you to the selection committee for honoring me this year and naming me a distinguished teacher for 2023 at the middle level of instruction. To my GPA family, thank you for your nomination, your initial nomination, and for believing in me to carry on this honor. And to my friends and my family, my students and their families, thank you for trusting me and my vision for education today, tomorrow, and the many years to come.
And in the high school teacher category, we have Stacy Chestnut, a language arts teacher at East High School.
Not write an analysis, you cannot write the introduction to analysis until you are credible.
Stacy has a great way of developing relationships with her students. She believes that students should be included in and responsible for their own education. She teaches her students to think critically about the content and to be independent thinkers while also celebrating their creativity. High school was a safe haven for her growing up, and she wants her students to have that same feeling.
All right, it's a rhetorical question to the universe. Can you say it like that one more time? Like, you're questioning the universe, like, you're questioning history, you're questioning your fate.
Stacy serves as a mentor for student teachers and new teachers, including fellow distinguished classroom teacher Kiara Suarez Sosa. She works to help them start off their careers successfully. Her peers continue to express gratitude for the support she provides. Stacy says working with new teachers improves her teaching as well. She is the sponsor for East's Feminist Club and Aces Poets Society, which participate in Aces in the Alley, an art event that takes place on Douglas. She also facilitates East's Poetry Out Loud Contest as a way to encourage a love of language arts outside of the classroom.
All right, let's give Dustin a big round of applause.
Stacy says high school students are very perceptive about which teachers can make a difference in their learning and their lives. She strives to have her students know she is trustworthy, competent, reliable, and relatable. They expect her to be at her best every day. She strives to demonstrate that she is enthusiastic about their learning and... She strives to demonstrate that she is enthusiastic about their learning and their successes.
I love to learn, and I get to be around a community of knowers, both young, older, my colleagues, my students, that are continuing to engage me in the process of being a lifelong learner and trying to give that back to my students as I become more knowledgeable and more credible. Hopefully, I'm becoming a better leader, a better facilitator, a better mentor for their own knowledge and feeling more powerful and strong in the world, really.
Let's go, round of applause, that's right.
Okay, in the support teacher elementary category, we have Patrick Loganbill. Patrick is a PE teacher at Linwood Elementary.
The goal is to get all the way up to 10, and if you can get all the way up to 10, then to get all the way back down to 1.
Whether Patrick is interacting with students in class, in the hallway, at recess, or during Friday dance sessions, it's obvious that he cares for and respects his students, and they care for and respect him in return. Patrick has unique ways of providing fun and relevant PE lessons. He's not afraid to try new things if he believes it will provide his students with success.
Good try, Jose, good try.
Patrick's father was a teacher at West, and he learned from him what a difference a teacher could have on the lives of their students. Patrick works to build positive relationships with all his students because he knows it makes a difference in their learning. He wants his students to trust him as a role model.
Same thing, he gets one try to knock down one pin. Oh, he got it. Nice job. Whoa. I've never seen that happen before in my life, but that does count. We got that on camera, too. That's incredible.
He created a before-school club called Bright Future Academy, where students can learn leadership skills and explore options for after they graduate high school. The students learn about interview and job skills, have guest speakers from local businesses, and go on college trips.
Let your wrist do the work. That's right.
As a student, Patrick always asked why. That's why he always talks to the students about the purpose of lessons before, during, and after each unit. He says there may be a student who might not like a lesson, but understanding the why behind it can help engage them.
I get to see every kid, and I get to see kids from kindergarten to age five, all the way up through fifth grade. So really get to learn a lot about them and see them grow socially, emotionally, as well as academically, and get to know their families better. And then their siblings come, and they come back from middle school and say hi. So you just really get to build that community a lot stronger when you get to see every kid as a PE teacher. There you go, that's way better. Okay, for real, that pin thing was like the best part of my year. It's never happened before, it'll never happen again. I should have bought a Lotto ticket on that day. I didn't write notes, so I think when I start crying, it's probably when I need to stop talking, which is already starting. But I have a lot of people to thank. You're only as good as the people you surround yourself with. And my parents are right up there, and they're the best. And that's the real Mr. Loganbill? Because he taught chemistry, which is a heck of a lot harder than teaching PE, let me tell you. Very blessed to be a teacher in Wichita, very grateful for being nominated. Linwood, my students especially, thank you.
And last but not least, in the support teacher secondary category, we have Chrissy Mate, instructional coach based out of Alvin Morris Administrative Center.
You've established this collaborative culture where it's safe to put ideas on the table, knowing that not everybody's going to love every idea that we put out there, but it'll help you narrow to the best.
Chrissy is an expert when it comes to inspiring other coaches and teachers. When she is running Friday Learning Lab, it is obvious how skilled she is as a leader and presenter. She says she is most fulfilled during that time as she works to inspire almost 40 instructional coaches, who then take what they've learned back to their buildings.
We're going to continue to build relationships with one another as we learn together and do activities.
She also spends her time analyzing various data points with her team to determine what needs to be covered with instructional coaches, as well as to help them gain a deeper understanding of district initiatives. She facilitates professional learning with principals, teachers, substitute teachers, and bus drivers.
So it really was kind of a celebration of what's been going well? Yes.
Chrissy says she is most proud of serving on the district's Behavior Work Group, bringing many departments together to develop our behavior protocol, create behavioral support documents, and produce the standard reference grading behavioral scales.
I thought of you the minute I read this. I was like, Becky and I, mm-mm.
Chrissy says that as an instructional coach, it's her job to highlight a person's strengths and build trust. She says her heart swells with pride when she sees coaches be successful. Colleagues say her influence and expertise is felt by every secondary teacher in the district. They just don't always know it's coming from her. She makes all secondary coaches better.
Just as I've been a coach and gotten to work with so many incredible teachers, and I've gotten to do so many fun things with so many, then I realized I'm impacting even more students in a coaching role. Now I get every stakeholder, get to be with every stakeholder, and that allows me to impact 48,000 kids instead of just my 100 at Jardine. And that you can hit all of our standards with fun topics like that is exciting for our teachers. It really takes it not only to the science of teaching, but then to the art of teaching.
Well, anyone who knows me knows I'm just going to go ahead and feel my feels with you today. The minute someone started, their voice cracked up here. I thought, don't worry, you won't cry alone. I'm here. Oh, gosh, 22, this is my, this is my 23rd year in the district, and I have 23 years of people to thank, so I hope, it's a sleepover. Just everyone that I have, every boss that I've had, every colleague that I've worked with, the teachers that were in my behavior session today at in-service, I want to thank them. I am inspired by everyone that I come in contact with and work alongside my family. Oh, my stars, my family. And my friends, my colleagues, the other lead coaches. I could not do the work that I do without them. And Holly, my boss over there. But mostly, I'm just, I'm humbled. I was, I cried when I got the nominee, and for me, that was the win. I was like, wow, thanks. And then when I was a finalist and Jessica, who's one of my colleagues, was like my competition, I could tell you 30 reasons she should have won. And then when they showed up at Friday Learning Lab with that banner, woo, that was real exciting. So, but it's an honor to work with all the adults in our district, to impact all of the students in our district. So thank you very much.
As several folks mentioned, we want to ask family members and colleagues of any of these folks to please stand and be recognized because they're not up here without any of you. So if you're a family member or colleague of one of our distinguished classroom teacher finalists and semifinalists, could you please stand? All right, we have a couple other announcements to make. Just when you thought you were getting rid of us, here we come making a couple more announcements. So two of our teachers will be our nominees for Kansas Horizon Award, which recognizes teachers who do an exemplary job in their first year of teaching. So our nominees next year for the Kansas Horizon Award will be Jamie Lansing and Kiara Suarez Sosa. So also, we'd like to name those who will represent the Wichita Public Schools as our nominees for the prestigious Kansas Teacher of the Year Award. Our nominees are going to be Mario Flores and Eric Stone. We'll be getting a K toy packet to the two of you. And this is truly a great way to show off some of our incredibly talented teachers, and we thank you for this opportunity. Congratulations to all of you.
Oh my goodness, this is one of my favorite times of the year because we get to recognize how great our teaching staff that work with our kids every day really are. But this is just the tip of the iceberg. We have 7,000 other equally great teachers in the Wichita Public Schools. So congratulations to all of you. And we do have Joanna Farmer was one of our distinguished classroom teachers winners last year, and she's now a finalist, one of the final eight, for the Kansas Teacher of the Year. So we are very proud. Come September, we will know if she's become the Teacher of the Year, but she's, she's right up there in the last eight. So congratulations to Joanna as well. Next item.
Our next item of good news is we get to celebrate more of our teachers, but these are ones that are going to go, looking to go beyond to become leaders in our buildings. And I would like to invite Chris Went down to talk more about our aspiring building leaders cohort.
I'm bringing my entourage with me.
This is good, we like it.
Well, that was a hard act to follow, huh? But I think we're up to the challenge, don't you? Yes, very good. Well, good evening, members of the board, President Logan, Vice President Albert, and Dr. Thompson. Assembled before you or behind you today are our cohort two of our aspiring building leaders. These are currently teacher leaders, and individually, they are amazing. Collectively, they are an incredible force for positive change. So we're here to celebrate them tonight. I'd like to give you a little bit of history and a description of the program. And like Eric, I have to have notes because I'll talk forever, so three minutes or less. Here we go. We have two years of cohorts in the aspiring building leaders, and we have graduated 30 members of aspiring building leaders. And in case you're wondering, that is 100% of the people who went through our aspiring building leader program have graduated. The people you see behind you have spent extra hours, extra time, time away from family, and they have dedicated themselves to their learning, and they have also dedicated themselves to our students and to our staff and their continued growth. So we're going to celebrate them tonight. Our aspiring building leader program is pretty rigorous. We actually first have to have an application process. Then through the application process, we have an interview process. In that interview process, there's actually a project that they have to complete with a work sample. And we had over 95 people apply this year for the aspiring building leader program. From there, we've narrowed it down to about 30. From there, we will choose 16, and that was the same process that happened with the people you see behind you. This program is a semester long, so it's not like it's just a couple nights and then we're done. Every Tuesday night for 18 weeks, the teacher leaders you see behind you sacrifice their time. We bring them in from 4:45 to 6:15. We do feed you, right? Right? So we have the opportunity to get to know each other. We break bread together, and we get to be really a great community. And I think if you ask, they even have like a text string going between them. And that's one of the fun parts that Amanda and I, Amanda Kingery, when we created this program, we knew what some of the outcomes were that we wanted to have, but we've really been impressed with the amount of community that our cohorts have together. So we're super proud of them. As far as the program goes, we have district standards, we have national standards, and that is the foundation for the work that we do. And to make that come alive, we have district leaders like myself and others who present and facilitate learning. We have building principals, assistant principals, and other content knowledge folks who come and not only just talk about standards, it is not sit and get. We try to bring it to life so that we can have as much real-life opportunities for our leaders as possible. So a little bit more about the program, and then we're going to celebrate our superstars behind you. In our first cohort, I'll back up. We've been asked for data about, has this been successful and what kind of results are you seeing? Cohort one, last year's cohort, we had 15 folks in that cohort. 12 of those 15 folks have been in an administrative role this year. And honestly, we actually had some people in the original aspiring building leader program who became APs before the year started last year. So we know that this program is serving a definite need that we have for building leaders. We're going to obviously hope to place a lot of our cohort two people behind you as building leaders next year. I'm guessing that's their hope as well? Very good. And we're currently right now in the process of interviewing for cohort three, and we have seen so many talented teachers in those interviews. It really, it makes my heart feel happy for our district and for our kids because we're going to have a sustainable opportunity for leadership for years to come. One more point of pride I'd like to share. We are a part of the Wallace Foundation. The Wallace Foundation does work with leadership across the nation. We were selected this year as one of only 47 schools in the nation to continue this principal pipeline work. So when you think about our district and your investment as a board in this work, it's paying off, and it's actually recognized nationally. Think about that, 47 districts. And so we're super proud of the work that they have done, and it's allowed us to be recognized nationally as well. Final shout out to folks behind you. So we are super excited that you are all here. And just personally, on behalf of Amanda and I to cohort two, you're all amazing. You're going to be amazing leaders in whatever capacity in our district. We want you to make sure that you stay in our district and continue to serve our students and our staff. Before we recognize them individually, can we give them a round of applause as a group? And it wouldn't be a board presentation for aspiring building leaders without a token of appreciation. Dr. Thompson, could you help me pass them out? That'd be awesome. So when I call your name, if you will come up and see our superintendent, and she will give you your award for all of the hard work and all of the dedication that you've given. Yeah. It's heavy, isn't it? Yeah, there we go. First, Ashley Mills at Truesdale. Baxter Schmidt at Riverside. Charlie Barch at Northwest High. Christina Sweetberg at CMA, Kristin McAuliffe. Eric Torres at Curtis. Jane Bun at Coleman. Jan at Howke at Cloud. Jennifer Gilstrap at Horace Mann. Jennifer Wright at Lovature. Jose Martinez at West. Katie Skinner at CMA. Lauren Costin White at Robinson. Kwan Nguyen at Dodge. We don't think Kwan's ever met a stranger. Shamala Jackson at Spate. And Zach Sims at Stucky. And Dr. Thompson, we took a vote in cohort two. We'd like to give you an We'd like to give you an honorary cohort two. So again, it's my pleasure to get to serve beside such amazing teacher leaders who are going to be amazing building leaders in our district. So we stand ready for any questions, and by we, I mean they.
May I take pictures of them?
Sure.
I have some of them.
Go for it.
While Ernestine is doing that, being our photographer for our marketing department, I just want to congratulate all of you because it is wonderful that we have a program in our district where we can develop our future leaders because we always have people retiring and changing positions, and we need strong candidates behind them to be able to step in and hit the ground running. And we can tell with the Wallace Foundation's help, we have developed a program that allows us to do that. So congratulations to all of you because it's kind of a big deal to be selected for this, and we're really proud of you. So thank you very, very, very much. You've got to be faster, Ernestine. Oh my goodness. Now, next item, Patrick.
Next item, under reports, Service Employees International.
I'm sorry, Stan. I do not see a representative here, so next item.
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Ah, here comes Katie. Welcome. What a fun evening to get to celebrate all of good teachers.
Yes, that is amazing. Good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Dr. Thompson, and BOE members. I just wanted to say again, just like President Logan just said, congratulations to our fabulous DCTA winners. It's just been so wonderful to celebrate them tonight, and their videos and their speeches are so heartfelt. We really do have such amazing teachers in Wichita Public Schools and also our aspiring building principal program. I mean, what an awesome program. So that was really neat to see as well and celebrate. I wanted to start out by inviting each of you to our Reading Open to the World event on Thursday, April 20th, at Cloud Elementary. We've been working with Susan Aerosmith on this, and our AFT National President Randy Weingarten will be in attendance. Our tutor teachers will finally meet their students that they've been tutoring all year on teams, so it'll be a celebration. They'll meet in person. And we also have an exciting surprise for the staff and students on that day, so we hope that you can come and celebrate with us. We recently had Keith Wrightson with AFT Health and Safety out to visit us in Wichita, and Teri Moses was so kind. She took us out to visit several schools around the district. Keith was so impressed with how clean and welcoming our schools were in Wichita Public Schools, and we look forward to continue to working together to keep our schools safe for our employees and our students. So that was an amazing collaboration with Teri. I also wanted to let you know that I attended the March Behavior Work Group meeting, and I was very impressed with the work that they've been doing in that group. I want to thank Ernestine, Julie, and Diane for attending those meetings, and also Brandon Johnson for coming out to visit with our executive board at the UW office and sharing an update on all the wonderful work that they've been doing in the committee. I was very impressed with the work and the collaboration that's taken place on the Behavior Work Group Committee, and I'm hopeful that we can continue that work group in the future and maybe next year focus on using the reliable data to monitor our progress with those student behavior concerns and the feedback that we've gotten from all stakeholders. So thank you for coming to those meetings and being so supportive of this collaboration. I do have a request. One thing I've asked about is if it's, we've had a teacher recently who had an ADA accommodation that was denied, and so one thing I can't seem to find is a process for an appeal on ADA accommodations. If there's not a process, I was going to ask if you would consider one so that we could have some sort of process moving forward for denials. And I know we've been celebrating teachers and everyone's day, but I just want to thank each of you for all that you do. I see you out in the community and at all of our events and meetings, and I just want to say thank you. So that's all. Thanks.
Katie, if you could send that information about the reading open door to Patrick so that he can get it to all of us, please. Thank you. Kathy?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Next item.
Next item, public communications.
We do have one speaker, Erin Howerton, and as you come down, we do allow three minutes for every speaker. There'll be a timer in the corner there, and we ask that you not include personnel matters concerning district employees or matters that would violate the privacy of students. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and share tonight. My name's Erin Downey Howerton. I'm the Youth Services Manager at the Wichita Public Library, and I'm here tonight to share information about one of our favorite times of year, which is summer reading. Can you believe it's here already? Now, as we're all aware, summer can be a time that reinforces the learning done during the school year, but it can also be a time when young people experience the summer slide, which is a decline in reading ability and academic skills. The Wichita Public Library is committed to offering robust learning experiences that allow youth to explore new interests, learn about the things that they love, and keep their minds active and engaged during the summer months. So the library's Summer Reading Program is a free, fun way for students to engage their brains, meet new friends, and set their own goals for success. Now, we know that every young person has different interests and abilities, so we want to tailor our reading program to be as inclusive as possible. This year, children in grades kindergarten through fifth can either log online or pick up a badge book at a library location. This program will help them set their own goals for reading regularly and choosing activities that really appeal to them. The activity books and online log are bilingual to reach more audiences in both English and Spanish, and to allow students to track their progress with stickers and virtual badges to tap into their intrinsic motivation to read, learn, and think about their favorite interests. And we didn't forget teenagers. For teens in grades six through 12, we have a similar approach. Teens are going to get a blank journal and some starter stickers from us, or if they prefer, they can choose to log online. They'll also get some writing prompts, some ideas for goal setting, and the opportunity to connect with other teens at journal decorating programs where they can make it reflect their personal style. We hope that they'll continue to make goals and keep writing about their learning long after the summer ends. For students who meet their self-set goals, we're going to gift them a new book for their home library collection and some coupons for local businesses for food and fun. For free downloadable educator resources, including digital slides that you can show in your school buildings, slideshows that you can share with your students, and other great information, and learn more about the Summer Reading Program and all of the fun events that we have planned for students and families, please visit the library's website at wichita library dot org forward slash summer reading. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We do have one question. Julie?
Yes, I just want to thank you for this partnership that the library has with Wichita Public Schools. And just a, just a, just an experience that I had this week. I was cleaning out a cabinet, and I found a card file, and I was like, I don't remember that card file, what's in it? And when I looked in it, it was the summer reading list when my grandkids were in elementary school. And, you know, we'd put all the book names on the index cards, and they had made notes and stuff on each one of the cards, and it was just such a great memory and such a great time of reading with my granddaughters when they were in elementary school. And thank you for that memory that you created, and thank you for the way you support our kids' education in the summertime. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Erin. Next item.
Next item, consent.
Ernestine, do you have anything to pull?
I do not.
Okay. Stan?
I'd like to pull under, I believe it's Finance, B4.
Okay.
Yes, it is, B4.
Okay. I have nothing to pull this evening. Diane?
I do not have anything to pull.
Hazel?
Yes, I'd like to pull under Programs and Grants, D5.
Okay. Thank you. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Kathy?
Nothing to pull.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the rest of the agenda except for B4 and D5?
Motion to approve the consent agenda other than the items polled.
I second that. Okay, the motion was made by Julie and seconded by Ernestine. Motion passes 7-0. Let's start with B4. Stan?
Thank you, Cheryl. I just wanted to pull this item. Budget republication is somewhat of an unusual event. I'm not 100% sure about the history of this effort before, but I was wondering if Dr. Thompson could explain why are we doing this and the purpose of this?
Thank you for that question.
Thank you for the question. You are absolutely correct. This is something that we usually do not do, but it is a special reason why we are doing that. And the Chief Financial Officer, Susan Willis, is at the podium, and she'll give you a thorough explanation of why this has occurred.
Good evening, members of the board. Just as a reminder, when we're building the budget through the, what we're actually now getting ready to embark upon here in the next few months, we build that budget based on a series of estimates and known factors. One of the items that we estimate is the number of free meal applications that we'll get for the upcoming school year. If you recall, '21, '22, and '20, '21, we were in a free meals for all program, so we weren't collecting free meal applications. So what we did when we were estimating for free meal applications as we were getting ready for the '22, '23 school year is we did go back to those pre-COVID years, and we adjusted our estimate a little bit down for some enrollment declines. And that's what school districts across the state did. What actually happened, and I don't, I know we were aware of it, but I don't think we were aware of the potential impact, was Kansas started to participate in a federal program called the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program Demonstration Projects to evaluate direct certification with Medicaid. A very long program name, but essentially, families with students that qualified for Medicaid became automatically direct certified for free meals. And that number of students was significantly higher than we anticipated. So what has happened is Kansas, the Kansas State Department of Education during their audit process evaluated that our 29,500 student estimate was too low, that our audited count came in at 32,500, give or take, and are wanting to provide us those funds. However, the budget we adopted does not give us the authority to spend them, so we need to amend the budget so that we can turn around and spend those funds. And those at-risk funds, if you recall, are restricted by purpose. They are, have to be evidence-based, they have to be student-driven. So we will be looking at those additional funds in relation to our ESAR strategies and most likely moving some of those ESAR items into the at-risk funds because they qualify, they fit the definition, and it will be part of our exit strategy from those ESAR funds.
Stan?
Susan, so we budgeted conservatively after coming out of COVID for the free and reduced lunch programs. I know there were some concerns about whether or not our parents would be familiar with the forms again on whether or not to actually get them filled out. Was that part of the reason why we budgeted fairly conservatively, or was this end up being a problem?
No, I would say that was part of the reason. We always try to estimate high so we don't have to come back and ask for a republication of the budget, right? We know that from the, typically in an audit process, we will have students that either weren't in attendance or there was an issue that day that for some reason we couldn't count them. So we always try to estimate high. We thought the 29,500 would be high, given the fact that we were coming out of two years of no applications, but what we didn't anticipate was the effect of this Medicaid change.
Okay, and it's your professional opinion that it's worth republish for this so that we, well, I guess really the question is, when do we have to have these funds spent by?
So the at-risk fund is not like the general fund. There is a carryover allowance, so we do not have to spend all of the dollars that, again, we didn't know we had until fairly recently. But what we can do is, again, shift some of those ESAR spending items, utilize the at-risk funds that we have more ESAR availability for next year, which we can then take use of during the '23, '24 budget year. So we'd like to minimize the amount of at-risk carryover, knowing that ESAR doesn't have that same timeframe of budget.
So our budget this year and next year's budget should benefit from this republication?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move that we adopt C4, the '22, '23 budget republication.
I'll second. The motion was made by Stan and seconded by Julie. I see no discussion, so please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0.
One small additional tidbit of information, 160 districts already have to republish this year, so that just shows you that the extent of that factor is definitely statewide.
Yeah.
Thank you. The next item is Hazel, and it's D5.
Yes, I pulled this item not because I have questions, but because I think we need to acknowledge this. The topic is the VEX, I assume it's VEX Worlds Robotics Competition, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the background on this. This trip is a culmination of a year-long project where students are asked to design, build, and program a robot to compete in competitions with other students from around the state and world. As the students are working through this course, they develop a passion for engineering and robotics, leading them to take CTE courses in the future. This course teaches students to innovate designs and promote real-world educational experiences unlike any other course. The district now has seven teams that have received invitations to participate in this event. And I just thought it was very important that we acknowledge these students in this program, a robotics program, and if you've never been to a tournament, I highly recommend it. It's very, it's complex, hard to understand, but it's wonderful what these students are doing. And so with that, I'd like to move that we adopt D5.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Hazel and seconded by Stan. The two schools that are involved in this are Gordon Parks Academy and Allison Traditional Magnet, so please cast your votes. Motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Next item, under policy, first review, proposed consolidation of student records and enrollment services, policy 5505.
Okay, and Dr. Thompson, can you just give us a little background on why we are re-changing or adding to this policy, please?
So on this particular policy, the policy is 5505, as he mentioned. We are adding portions on AIP 10, 11, and 12, which is add partial enrollment. And so if you look on AIP 10, 11, and 12, there's two separate components here. 10 and 11 work together, and these particular two items, actually, we've been doing this practice, which And these particular two items, actually, we've been doing this practice, which is allowing non-accredited, accredited, private elementary or secondary schools, or any private denominational parochial schools are required, they can enroll part-time within our school district. And we've allowed, this has happened forever. You think about students with disabilities, students that need ESOL, speech, those kinds of things. We've been doing that for a long time. However, it was not necessarily in our policies, written inside of our policy. So, still, really, this is just taking what we do and adding that into policy so that it's consistent across the entire school district. Because we kind of have, some people are doing it this way and that way. We thought we'd give some guidance and make sure that we stay together and unified. So, when parents are moving from school to school, which our students do sometimes, that there's consistency in our practices. Okay, that's the first piece with 10 and 11. You look at 12. 12 actually is a partial of House Bill 2567, and it's two parts, parts to this. So, again, you're going to get a second part at another date. But the first part of this is in alignment with that particular House bill. And it is around part-time students that are enrolling in our school district. And again, it's just giving some clarity and some guidance to that House bill. And so, that's what this policy is doing for us as a district.
Thank you. So, we're updating our policy to match what we currently do, and then adding the piece that aligns us with House Bill 2567.
That is correct.
Okay. This is a first read. Are there questions or things that you'd like to have answered before we move to a second read at our next meeting? Okay, I'm seeing none, so we will move this to a second read in the May meeting. Next item?
Next item, under Operations, Superintendent's Contract?
Well, we are excited. This is a good thing. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Beaufort, would you stand up and wave? We have gone through a very difficult process with very excellent people to select the next superintendent that has to follow the superstar that sits beside me now, who has decided it's time to retire. So, we are very thrilled to have you on board. We have been working with you and your attorney to get your contract in place, and we have discussed this with the board. So, are there questions from the board before we take a motion on this? No? Okay, I move that we extend the contract to Mr. Kelly Beaufort.
I second it.
I'm going to wait one second because Julie's re-entering the room, and I know she will want to vote on this. But it's okay. We're ready to vote on extending the contract to our new superintendent. Please cast your votes.
Oh, yes, I would not have wanted to have missed this. I thought you were still on the policy.
Okay, please cast your votes. Motion passes 7-0. Okay, mister, now your work really begins. Okay, next item?
Next item, under Finance, Budget Report?
All right, so, the fun begins again. Aren't you glad that it's time for budget season? So, we are, as we started this last meeting, we are getting ready to move pretty swiftly because we have a lot of work to do to ensure that we have a working budget for next year. So, we are going to just, again, this particular meeting, we're going to just bring you, kind of slowly move us into this process with a few items. We're going to talk a little bit about some legislative pieces, and then we'll talk to you about what's next, all right? So, you guys ready for this? Everybody's looking at me like, oh, God, here we go again. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Susan Willis.
I think Dr. Thompson's ready to just give the finance presentation.
Well, you trained me well over the years. I know, I could probably.
Well, good evening, President Logan, Vice President Albert, Dr. Thompson, and members of the board. Dr. Thompson is exactly right. After our Capitol Outlay Summary in March, we are now ready to kick off our normal cycle of budget presentations that will go from now until September. So, what, the documents you are being handed right now, one obviously is a copy of tonight's PowerPoint. It's relatively short since we're just kind of dipping our toe into the budgetary waters tonight. And the other is the Budget at a Glance, and I will give a shout-out to our Budget Director, Addie Lowell. You can wave back there. And the amazing budget team that works on the much more user-friendly eight-page, 12-page Budget at a Glance as opposed to the very cumbersome adopted budget book that you certainly could read if you wanted to, but the Budget at a Glance is much more meaningful and, I think, very targeted to what the district is trying to accomplish with its finances and resources. So, for tonight, we'll go ahead and get started with how I typically like to start is a look at the current-year budget and how it's performing. Right now, we are at the, it's hard to imagine, but we are 75% through the budget year for fiscal year '23. Only three months left. As of March 31st, as we closed out that month's business, we have used essentially 55% of the general fund and the supplemental general fund. And for most of our presentation, that's where we focus on performance. That's also where we focus when you get those monthly finance reports, because the bulk of our spending, our operational spending is occurring here. That is a good bellwether for how the budget overall is performing. We have 45% budget remaining, and this is, this is good news. You would look and think we're really kind of out of whack. But if you recall this chart, which has been updated now for this fiscal year, you can see that the reason that we are a little bit out of whack as we are in March going into April is because the bulk of our spending occurs in June when we do a lump-sum payment to our teachers. They get paid for June, July, and August, in June. And so, we have to have the budget authority to pay those three months of salary in one month. So, we need that budget authority remaining at this point in the year, and it is. So, everything looks to be on track. The only kind of curveball we had was the at-risk funding, which we knew we were a little off early on. We just didn't know the final audited number until KST released those numbers last month. So, we've been prepping for our amended budget process, which I have not personally gone through. Addie has not personally gone through. So, this is a learning experience for us as well. Kind of some early planning positives as we were looking at all the work that goes into preparing for fiscal year '24. We knew going in that ESER federal funds would still be a big part of that budgetary process. And that is good news for the budget, right? We're still finishing ESER projects. We still employ a number of people using ESER funding. That's still a big portion of all of the work that we're doing in the Finance Department. The Governor's Budget, which was released a few months ago, had a lot of positives potentially for education. That budget fully funded fiscal year '24 and '25 with that three-year rolling average of CPI to the base state aid. Fiscal year '24's number is 5.3% increase to the base aid per pupil. Her budget also included professional development aid, mentor-teacher support, continuation of the Safe and Secure Schools Grant, and expansion of the Mental Health Initiative. She also had recommended a five-year phase-in of special ed funding to get us to the 92% of excess cost, and Wichita sits at around 67% right now. So, there were a lot of early positive signs. There were certainly some risks. We knew, obviously, that we have to get in front of this planning to start to roll back some of these ESER initiatives as we get ready for an end date in September of '24. We know still this, this high-density at-risk sunset continues to kind of loom. It did get onto a committee floor, I think I testified, in February in support of eliminating the sunset or at least extending it. It didn't, it didn't go anywhere. So, we're still on track for a 630, 24 sunset, which would mean the potential loss of $17 million of high-density at-risk. We're hoping that when we get to that point, we, again, will be able to go up and testify in support of the continuation of these dollars, particularly with the, with the elimination of the use of ESER. The at-risk will be critically important for our work to continue in those areas. We still have staffing challenges, but I would say we're easing here just a little bit. I think we're up to 800 subs now, so that's really good news. We have been able to extend a number of offers to teachers with some early turnover that we've had. PARAs still remain a bit of a challenge, but we have seen some signs that maybe there's a little light at the end of our staffing challenges tunnel. Not there yet, but some really good signs. We certainly, as conversations you've had at the board table, continue to have some high student needs, particularly around behavior. So, those are some financial resource allocation challenges that we will continue to have. And obviously, there's been some legislative activity that has taken some of those early positives and maybe put a little shade on some of those potential dollars. So, what we're watching right now, we've hit the end of that first major legislative period. The first adjournment has occurred. We don't have a K-12 budget. They did not, they were unsuccessful in getting that passed through the House and the Senate. So, based on what we were seeing, that might actually be a positive because there were some things in that particular bill that were not necessarily friendly to K-12 budgeting. But at least there will be an opportunity for the House and the Senate to come back and have some additional conversations. Kind of interesting, this has been happening the last few years, but it definitely was at work this year. It's been very difficult to kind of analyze the impacts of bills because a lot of the changes are happening in the committee, at the committee level. When the House and the Senate come together, the bill goes in a certain way, and it comes out looking very different. So, it's been very difficult to kind of get on those, get on those bill trackers to see what's going to impact us, how is it going to impact us, and then start to engage with our delegations to say, here's what that really means for Wichita, because the bills don't look like what we see on the tracker when they're coming out. So, that's been a little bit of a challenge. There's been very little time to have some discussions around those. The House sub bill for Senate Bill 83, that went in as an expansion of the tax credit, and it kind of came out of committee with special education funding, a voucher bill. There were several components to that. That did get defeated, so that's not moving forward. There is, the tax plan went through, and what kind of the significant change for us there is related to the 20-mil levy for schools. We don't levy that, the state does. That's how they fund their state aid back to us. Last year, they increased the exemption, if you recall, from $20,000. The first $20,000 for years had been exempt from that 20-mil property tax. They increased that to 40. Coming out of the Tax Committee work, they're going to increase that to $60,000 exemption. So, that, when we're getting deeper into the budgetary process and we're talking about revenue-neutral, that change will come into play for us. And then, the other major bill that we'll be watching here as they come back into session will be the House sub for Senate Bill 113. That will most likely become the K-12 budget bill. There, again, there were a few things. There was one change in particular that's a bit problematic. I don't know that it will survive. I'm not sure it's worth chatting too much about at this point. But there definitely will be a lot of things that we're going to have to watch very carefully. And again, the other thing we were waiting on is, will this be the year that we get some additional special ed funding or not? That will definitely impact kind of our budgetary proposals as we move forward. So, giving you just an early, really, really early look at funding, I wanted to give you this worksheet. We know what our, we know that the base aid for the general fund is still the lookback. Either it will be this year's enrollment for next year, or the, or last year's enrollment for '23, '24. We'll be using '21, '22's enrollment because it's higher, but it will still be less. We're still in a slight decline, right? We had that large COVID decline of 2,600 students. You can see that we were at 44,000 and change for this year's enrollment number. That's going to go down to 43,451. So, we will have, we will take that loss of FTE in next year's budget. The other thing that we have, we have not been seriously watching, because last year it was very small, but it has grown quite a bit, is the tax credit scholarship impact to the budget. Last year, it was 38 FTE. So, it was, you know, it was a good-sized number, but not, not significant to our budgetary size. But now, as we're getting closer to the half-a-million-dollar mark, it's something we really are going to have to start kind of forecasting and, and working into our budgetary plan. So, this year, we were told in October that 92, 92 FTE, full-time equivalents, would have to be adjusted off that base number. That 44,093 for this year's budget was reduced in October by 92 FTE for the students that, in '20, which is this, that's the base enrollment year, took advantage of tax credit and left us in the following year. So, the challenge there is we didn't get it until October, so we couldn't plan for it. So, now, we're going to kind of start a reserve process where we're going to have to plan for this on an ongoing basis, and we'll probably have to plan for it to grow, okay? So, I just wanted to kind of put that out there. We had been, we hadn't really seen any impact up until last year, and now, we're really starting to see some of that. The weighted FTE is based on a current-year calculation of enrollment. So, I just took this year's, and we applied that for next year. That's just going to be a baseline for us. And that will, that will reflect the increased number of free meals, right? So, we've adjusted our assumptions there. So, you can see that while state aid is going up 5.3% as far as the base aid per student, our increase for funding in the general fund will only go up about 4.4% because of those, that slight enrollment decline and the impact of an increasing tax credit situation. So, that's just, that, that tax credit, we think is going to go up from the 92 student, 92 FTE to about 120. That's, I guess. Because we have no trend data, right, to really look at. So, I'll pause there for a moment. That, again, that's, that's, that's just the general fund, just base and weighted before we really get into some of the deeper analysis of what do we think is going to happen with bilingual? What do we think is going to happen with pre-K? Just taking a lift and shift from where we are right now to next year. Okay? So, from a budget planning perspective, we obviously will continue to monitor the legislative activity. That's going to be probably the most impactful thing that we'll be watching here in the next month. We will provide the board some updated forecasts of those new funds. Particularly, we'll give you some updates on the LOB, I hope, in May. We'll start to kind of bring to you those fixed-cost increases, utilities, property casualty insurance, transportation, some of those contractual obligations. We kind of know what they are. So, we'll give you that kind of a first look there. ESER utilization, I would imagine you'd like to know where we're at and kind of what we're working on for next year, so we'll give you an update there. And then, we'll be coming to you with that revenue-neutral rate recommendation. And then, we'll get, we'll do a deep dive into needs assessments and all of that work that we started for the first time last year. So, to kind of put that on a date timeline perspective, you can kind of see how this lays out from April to September 11th. That's kind of our, our planned adoption, budget adoption date, and kind of everything in between that's got to occur as we get rolling for fiscal year '24. And with that, I think we're good for tonight. Just save some, same, save some excitement for next time. And I will, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, we do have some questions. Ernestine?
Since that bill failed that had the special ed funding in it, at this point, there is no, they have not approved any kind of special ed funding. Are they going to try to put that, well, I know you can't, nobody can read their mind, but presumably, they will put special ed in the, in the whole big funding bill?
There is, again, if I have the Susan Willis crystal ball, which is probably meaningless in the big scheme of things, but do I think that a, that the legislature puts in special ed in order to try to pass it? That's, that could, that might be very likely, particularly since they have some federal funding to, that they want to use for that purpose. at least for a year. So I could, I could very easily see them putting in one year of special ed funding.
You mean increased special ed funding, up to 92% perhaps?
No, I don't think we'll get to 92% in a year, but I think they will, they will put some funding into that. I think they will, because I think that makes it more difficult to walk away.
Okay. Diane?
Can you pull up Slide 7? So I just want to recap, because funding is a little bit complicated.
Yes.
So on the first line, the base FTE, that is a two-year lookback.
Correct.
And so then you, you pick the largest student enrollment for full-time enrolls, enrollment numbers, and use that for the budget for next year.
Correct.
And then the next line, the eligible for the tax credit scholarship program, that is a one-year lookback.
So what, I actually had to go back and I read this, because this gets messy. We're using 2021 for 22, 23, right? That's two years back. In '20, these students elected to take a tax credit, and they were with us on 9/20. So we included them in the count on 9/20 of '20. 2021, they were with us. 21, 22, they were not. So because, or is that right? I'm already getting the dates wrong. We counted them, but then the following year, they weren't there, so they go back and reduce us. So it's, it's a two-year swing, and they go back and adjust our enrollment.
Okay.
So it is, it's weird.
It is, it is very weird. Could we have a slide, kind of?
Yes.
Charting that out for us next time? I know, we didn't talk about that beforehand, but, and then when we go down to the next line, the weighted FTE, that is the current year. So you're constantly having to look back two years, one year?
Yes.
And then?
And estimate what we think's going to happen on 9/20 of '24. 23, for the 24 budget. Which was on first, right?
I just wanted to kind of recap that, because it's a little odd to do numbers in that fashion. So that took me a little bit of time last year to go through that. And I just wanted to point that out to people of why this can be a little bit convoluted and confusing. So when you're talking about this, those different categories use different years to get those numbers. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you to your team as well.
Stan?
Thank you. Susan, on the $17 million of high-density at-risk funding, that's at, are at-risk, that's at risk. That's $17 million. And traditionally, and I don't understand the Kansas Legislature 100%, but they've kind of dangled that till the very end every year. It seems like the six years I've been on the board, that's what the case is. Is there any indication that this year's any different? It seems like in the past, they've put it back in at the very last moment. And again, I'm asking you to look at your crystal ball.
So you're exactly right in that it, we've had a number of times that high-density has had a sunset set, and they have come and either extended it or had, put a one-year moratorium on the sunset. They've done a number of things, right? And the sunset used to be 23, and then in a different bill, it got extended one more year. So, I mean, if you, as an individual, were told you're going to lose 15% of your income a year in advance, you would probably change your spending habits right now, right? We're not going to do that, because we don't think we're realistically going to lose it because of that very thing, that the pattern has been extent. And we will advocate very seriously about not losing it, because again, these are dollars serving the highest needs students that we have, and the needs are significant. So we will continue to, you know, shout that to the rooftops, that these funds, and again, we've been audited and audited and audited on our use of at-risk dollars, and we've come through very cleanly because we are spending on the evidence-based practice list. So I feel very strongly that we, our spending in these areas can stand up to anyone that wants to look at how we're utilizing these dollars. To just decide at an arbitrary date that you should have, you know, met the mountain goal, I think that's, that's challenging. We have, again, students coming in every year with more and more needs. They're not, they're not going away. We graduate them. It's not that the ones coming in behind them don't have needs. So I don't know that I understand the sunset concept. We were never going to reach this goal of, we don't have any more at-risk student needs anymore, or at least we don't have this much. We are always going to be a district. Because we are large and we are urban, we have a high concentration of students in poverty. I don't know that that's necessarily going to change at 630 of '24.
So on your chart that Diane was mentioning, Chart 7, are you including or excluding the $17 million?
Right now, because for fiscal year '24, those dollars will exist in the budget. They are included.
Okay. If, for some reason, that isn't extended, then Chart 7 changes?
It will change for next year's chart.
Yeah.
Right, for the, because they were good through the end of fiscal year '24, which is the budget year we're planning. And we have to plan then for fiscal year '25, how we reduce spending by $17 million loss, if it truly does end at the end of the next fiscal year.
Okay. I appreciate you clarifying that.
Ms. Albert, can I read this to you real quick? Because I don't know that it will help you. You may still want the chart, but I'm going to read what the letter says. According to our records, your district had 92 FTE enrolled on September 20 of '20 and enrolled in a non-public school during the 21, 22 school year under the tax credit scholarship program. For the purposes of determining funding for the 22, 23 school year, the 20, 21 final audited FTE, which is pre-populated on the superintendent's report, was reduced by those students participating in the tax credit program. Please notice, your budget software does not reflect this. So, clear as mud. I will try to map that for you, but this was the letter we received.
Okay, Diane.
Okay, sorry, this is. So because we use, we can look back on the last two years for the FTE students. So let's try to keep the numbers just real clean and simple. If we have, we're going to oversimplify this. If the largest number for the last two years is, say, 100 students, then they're looking at the scholarship program. Are they, say you're using that 100 number, and they're saying you've got 10 students that took a scholarship program, are they only allowing us to apply for 90 students for full-time enrollment?
Yes.
Even though we have 100 that are?
Eligible, right.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's, it is a subtraction of a number, not just a difference in full-time enrollment?
It is a subtraction from what we originally built a budget on. They are going to reduce our funding by those 92 that we counted in our budget. Because we counted, they were included in that base, that base enrollment number in '20. So they're coming back and saying, we're going to reduce, because they didn't go to school with you in 21, 22, we're going to reduce that 20 enrollment number.
Right, it's not just because we have a smaller number of students enrolled. It is literally taking, taking the number of students we have enrolled and then subtracting that.
Enrolled on 9/20 of '20.
Okay.
Sometimes this gets more confusing instead of clear.
Yes. That's right. And when, whether we expand it or we change it, then which rules are we talking about?
Okay, I have a question on the sunset of the high-density weighting. They are voting on that in this year's budget or in next year's?
So there is no vote. It is in statute that the funding comes to an end on June 30 of 2024. There will be no more high-density funding if nothing is done statutorily to either extend it or add it into the normal school finance funding formula, which is what we were proposing when we testified, is just put it in the school finance formula. And when you reevaluate that in '27, you can evaluate high-density at that time. Or, you know, again, we were just looking at it as a, it will always be rough to take a funding reduction. It is certainly tough when 250 million-plus of federal dollars over three years is coming to an end. And oh, on top of that, you have to figure out how to reduce another $17 million. So we had hoped to at least gain a few years beyond '24. The ideal would be it just go into the formula, like everything else. But there is, it will end if no action is taken.
And I cannot tell you how long ago this was established, but it was quite a while ago.
At-risk funding has been, has been part of a formula for years. High-density has been, again, for a number of years. I don't know.
And it's always had some kind of a sunset on it.
Certainly in the past 10 years, there's been this kind of rolling, sunset, extend, sunset, extend, sunset, extend.
But because this is in June of 2024, we're literally a year out from it.
Right.
And so next year's legislative committees can deal with this issue, and we'll have a clearer picture before we have to approve next year's.
Correct.
Not next year's, the year afters.
Right. The 20, the 25, when we're working on fiscal year '25's budget, we'll either need an, you know, an extension, a roll, some sort of statutory roll-in, or we will be talking about $17 million of necessary reductions.
And you mentioned that we testified on this. So this is an issue that the legislature is currently talking about?
Yes, yes. There was, there was a bill to, to take some sort of action related to that high-density sunset. And really, the committee was very open, understood what we were saying. It just didn't get to the floor.
Okay. All right.
I'm seeing no other questions, so thank you very much.
Next item?
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
I have, I have nothing.
Next item?
Next item, Board of Education report and requests.
Ernestine?
I have nothing.
Stan?
No report this month.
I have nothing.
Diane?
Well, I'm just going to state just a few places that I've been and draw people's attention to our website to see the video that was done on North High mascot reveal. And so I was at that presentation, and that was, the video was very well done. So thank you to everybody that was involved in working at that. And I attended the Behavior Work Group that our UTW president mentioned, and I was at the spring signing day that our HR department has been putting together to welcome new teachers that are signing their contract to start teaching in our district in the fall. And then also attended the Board of Education Good Apple Awards. And I think almost our entire board was present that night. So thank you to everybody that was involved in all those different events.
Hazel?
Good evening. I just wanted to talk a little bit about a few things that I was invited to. I was invited to Topeka to sit at a roundtable with five other board members from various districts across the state to share what's going on in our districts. And I invited all the legislators to visit their hometown districts so they can see what's going on. We have a lot of great things going on in our district. I had the honor to be a keynote speaker for the 100th anniversary of the Scholastic Art Awards at Mark Arts. I was, I'm so very proud to see such a large, outstanding representation from our 259 art students. It was really nice, very, very well-attended. I attended the teacher's signing day, where we celebrated a group of new teachers who will be joining our WSPS family. I want to congratulate them and welcome them to the district. I also attended the Good Apple Award, the Spring Fling Drive-Thru. So I really didn't understand what it was. It was outside. I wasn't dressed for it. It was kind of windy. But it was really a great time, because the teacher, new teachers, I think it was one-year teachers, drove through the parking lot at AMAC, and they were greeted by various entities in the district, including the, our partner, our credit union partners, and our union partners, and just a really good group of people. Heights Drum Line was there to play their drums, and it was very, it was just exhilarating. It was fun. Our group was so energetic and greeting all of these teachers that came through. And the very best part of it, at the end of the line, after they picked up all their little prizes in the drive-thru, they all got a pizza to take home for dinner. So I just thought that was a great, a great time. I attended a presentation to high school principals about House Bill 2498 that was passed April 5, 2018, concerning tribal regalia and objects of cultural significance, talking about mortarboard and tribal wear regalia for graduation. I had a very informative tour in the office of the McKinney-Vento Program hosted by Cynthia Martinez. And the McKinney-Vento Program is a program that promotes school stability and academic success to help students overcome obstacles and barriers to our, to an education. And so in saying that, there are a lot of things going on in that program that I think we need to celebrate. And so for that, I would like to request McKinney-Vento do a short update report on their successes and program goals and how WPS families qualify and utilize this program. So I'd like to submit that request. And then, last but not least, I would like to announce that the Indian Education Program will host their Schools Out Pow Wow on April 15 at the Mid-America All-Indian Center, and it's free and open to the public, and it starts at 2:00 p.m. And I would like to put a plug for Washington Elementary, who will have their very first World's Fair Celebration on April 20. And Earhart is having their annual Earth Day Celebration on Friday, April 21, and that is all.
Thank you. Julie?
I have no reports or requests tonight. Thank you.
Kathy?
I have no requests, but I do have report. I was a volunteer at North High for Pando, for the Ureality. And I was at the booth of childcare. And these are for sophomores who come in, and they, they didn't realize how expensive having kids were. And I thought, maybe that's a good lesson in and of itself. I also had the opportunity, like you and Stan did, going to Isley for the Braille Pledge of Allegiance. And this was very unique in that Isley was the first school in the nation to be presented a Braille flag with the Pledge of Allegiance on it. And that just kind of gave me goosebumps. I, too, with the whole board, was at the Good Apple Award. And I always love going to that, because you learn. You learn every time you're there. There's more to learn. And I was also asked and invited to be on the board for the honorary cadet 6th grade. And these are 12-year-olds who are outstanding, outstanding students. And they want to be there. And it was with Dr. William, what's his last name? Thank you, thank you. He also was one of the judges. And he and I both collaborated just with our eyes that this could be a good behavioral tool, JROTC. Thank you.
Okay, next item?
Next item, new business.
I'm seeing none. Next item?
Next item, adjournment.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Period.
I second it.
Okay, it was moved by Ernestine and seconded by Kathy that we adjourn the meeting.